...for the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Heavenly Father, we come before you asking, Lord, did you give us grace and mercy, Lord? We ask that you protect us from all hurt, harm, endanger, Lord. Fret not yourself from evil doers, for they shall soon be cut off like the green grass that wither. Lord, I say, be in the midst of this meeting, Lord, direct us in God's. We ask for all these blessings in your Son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
(inaudible).
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Hartvitz, here. Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Yulacki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Okay, now we'll be moving to drawing of the names for the Council Scholarships. We have President Ms. Teresa Myrick, Chief Administrator, Academic Opers.
Thank you, and good evening to everybody. It's always a pleasure to be here to draw for the Common Council Scholarship, and on behalf of our students, I once again thank you for offering this scholarship for them. I brought with me this evening Ms. Esther Good. She's going to help me out. She is our Secondary Director for the School City of Hammond. So, also, I want to say I'm very pleased that this year we were able to get ninety-one seniors who applied for the scholarship. So, it's a nice amount of seniors that applied. Each of you received one of the sheets that tells how many seniors applied from each school, and it also breaks down for you in the bottom section there, it breaks down each school, how many seniors they have residing in Hammond, and then the formula that's used, what percentage of the number of scholarships, the fifteen scholarships that are given out, are given to each school. So, I'm going to ask for your help this evening. I have a little basket here, and we're going to pull out the names by school. We're going to start with Bishop Knoll first. So, I'm going to ask Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Vines to come on up and help us out with We actually draw for Bishop Knoll, we'll have one scholarship winner, but then we also draw two alternates for each school, just in case we have a situation where the person that's drawn doesn't take the scholarship.
Christian Campos.
Okay, Christian Campos is our winner. Okay, Jacob Casco is our first alternate.
Sabrina Garcia.
And Sabrina Garcia is our second alternate. Okay, our second school that we're going to draw for is Hast, and we'll draw one winner and two alternates, and we'd like Councilman Yulacki to help us out with this one. And this is our second year, the Hast is with us, they have seniors for the second year in a row, so it's nice to have them aboard. Okay. So, this is our winner, Monica Leanes is our winner, and we'll pick two alternates.
Jordan Beasley.
Okay. So, Jordan Beasley, Jordan Beasley will be our first alternate. Okay. So, Valentina Quineros is our second alternate. And I'll get rid of those. The third school we'll draw for is Clark, and Clark will actually have three scholarship winners, and we'll need Councilman Kolosinski and Markovich to come on up to help draw. Caitlin Gennardo is the first scholarship winner. Caitlin Gennardo. Our third scholarship winner is Myra Vega. Okay, then we need two alternates. There you go. First alternate is Jesus Fajardo. And second alternate? It's hard to grab. Second alternate is Elizabeth Hernandez. Okay, and that does it for Clark. Next, we have Gavitt, and they will have three winners and two alternates, and Councilman Opinker will have you draw these. Oops, sorry about that. Okay, first scholarship winner is Amber Earl. Second scholarship winner is Ellen Pecor, P-E-C-O-R. The third one is Marke Glennsey, and that's also a scholarship winner, Marke Glennsey. Now, we have two alternates. First alternate is Ivan Andrade. And our second alternate is Alex Saldivar. Councilman Higgs, we'll have you come on up and draw Hammond High for us. This gentleman's old hat at this kind of stuff. He's been the Chair of this for many years, haven't you, Councilman?
Yeah.
Our first scholarship winner is Jaquan Atkins. The second one is Marquis Davis. Davis is the last name. Now, we're going to pick two alternates. We have Valerie Gutierrez is one alternate, and the other one is Zulema Martinez is our second alternate, Zulema Martinez. I'm not sure we've ever had that many students apply from one school, but we had forty-two from Morton this year, which is really nice. And because of the formula, they get five, plus we'll pick two alternates. The first scholarship winner is Brandon Grasha. The second scholarship winner is Torres Isabella Torres. The third scholarship winner is Espinoza Maria Espinoza. The fourth scholarship winner is also another Espinoza, and this one is Teresa Espinoza. And the last scholarship winner for Morton is Castaneda Jennifer Castaneda. And now, we'll pick two alternates. The first alternate is Andrew Key. And the second alternate is Carla Gallegos. And that does it. Thank you so much. And then, we will be back at the next council meeting to award the scholarships, have you award the scholarships, and we'll have our principals and our students here with us.
Thank you, Ms. Myrick.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed. Next would be the approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, April eighth through April twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, for council meeting, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, beginning with claims dated four fifteen fifteen, and ending with claims dated four twenty-two fifteen. Claims number two-two-six-five through claim number two-five-two-one, for a total of four million, eight hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Kalwinski to accept the approval of claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on approval of claims? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote approval of claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Yulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Passage of claims, pass, nine-zero. Moving on to public hearing, confirming resolution number R-15 that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the city Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one. The public hearing is now open for Resolution fifteen R-oh-five, if anybody would like to speak on this issue.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
We talked about this in caucus. I just wanted to remind the council, and for those that weren't in the caucus, this is something that's previously been passed by the Hammond Council. We had to come back for reapproval from you all before it could take effect. It's a hundred percent tax abatement for our company, American Stair, that's moving to Hammond from Illinois, bringing all their employees, planning on hiring more employees once they get here. Over a three million dollar investment into a building that's been vacant for close to a decade in Hammond's first district, the North Hammond section of our city. I think it's a great project. It's the only time we've ever asked for a hundred percent tax abatement. It's the only one I've ever issued as mayor. I don't know if the council, I'd have to ask Clerk Golick, you know, in his mind, if that's ever happened before, but this is unique. We worked hand in hand with the IEDC on this deal. They helped us close it, but this company was very specific about what they were seeking, and in my opinion, if we didn't give them what they were asking for, they would not have chosen Hammond as their, as their business location.
Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Come celebrate the expansion of the open house. You're courageously invited to the ribbon-cutting ceremony at our new one thousand feet, square feet complex at six fifty-one Conkey Street, Hammond, Indiana, Friday, May first, two thousand and fifteen, at three P.M. Come see yourself the expansion, the roof brothers, that allows a more effective operation and continued growth that will help us better serve our customers. Please join us in celebrating our success, and we look forward to serving the needs of our customers and generations to come. Please contact Mike Guy with any questions, seven-seven-three-two-six-four-five, loud and extension two-four-four.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank Councilman Higgs for reading that off. It's another Illinois company that we got to relocate to Hammond. With the council's help, we relocated our employees out of the Conkey Street location, moved them here into City Hall, which left that building vacant, and we had an interested developer from Illinois move their company right into Hammond's third district. So, ground opening is this week. I want to thank Councilman Higgs for reading that off for everybody. And I want to thank Africa, Phil, and the Economic Development Team, and everybody that relocated into Hammond City Hall to help make that deal happen, because if we did not have the space for them here, we could not have pulled that deal off. So, thank you, Councilman Higgs.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Hammond Police Department, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, fifty-one, annual memorial services, Wednesday, May twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at two P.M. At the Hammond Police Department, five oh-nine Douglas Street, Hammond, Indiana, four-six-three-two-oh. Detective Sergeant Bill Fox, EAW, October ninth, nineteen twenty-nine. Captain George Hayland, EWO, May sixteenth, nineteen thirty-seven. Patrolman John Garcock, EWO, January eleventh, nineteen forty-seven. Patrolman Donald B. Cook, EWO, January eleventh, nineteen forty-seven. Patrolman Frank H. Dunn, EWO, June first, nineteen sixty-one. Patrolman Lawrence J. Vasilek, EEW, November fourteen, nineteen eighty. Sergeant Ernest J. Matustov, I think, if I'm not correct. EWO, December twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-four. We would be privileged and honored of our fellow officers. Please check the front desk prior to the services.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
The tenth annual Joe B. Memorial benefited motorcycle runs plus party on the lake proceeds to benefit Kalen Yeoman's Tina Medusa. Saturday, May sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Wolf Lake Memorial Park, twenty-nine, thirty-eighth, South Cayman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four-six-three-two-oh. Single riders, fifteen dollars; double riders, twenty-five dollars. Sign up starts at nine A.M. First bike out at eleven A.M. Last bike out at four P.M. To make donations, write checks to Joe Patusteck Memorial Fund Incorporated, care of American Community Bank, forty-five, twenty-one, Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, four-six-three-two-seven.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, May sixth, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, six-thirty P.M. Friday, May first, Edison Community Watch on the Road will meet at the Golden Manor Senior Apartments at one P.M. On Friday, May first, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School at nine fifteen A.M. Jefferson Crime Watch will meet Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, at Jefferson School, six-thirty P.M. And the Plasky Park Neighborhood Association will meet Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, six-thirty P.M., at the American Legion on Goslin. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time. Mr. President, I would like to also announce that through the efforts of all of the crime watch groups and many in the, throughout the city of Hammond, we were able to collect eight hundred pounds of plastic bottle caps to participate in the Lake County Solid Waste District Capathon program. For collecting four hundred pounds of bottle caps, you will receive, it's a nonprofit organization, will receive a park bench made out of recycled plastic bottle caps. I am proud to announce that through the combined efforts of all the crime watches and many groups in the community, we have collected eight hundred pounds of plastic bottle caps that will be turned in at the Lake County Solid Waste District on Wednesday, and the benches will be picked up on Friday for the Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza senior building. The seniors are very excited about the prospect of having two benches in their courtyard, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated. It's kind of been a long road, but the end result is very gratifying, and it just warms my heart that so many people came together for this project. So, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I wanted to make sure, we had a public hearing on Resolution R-oh-one-five in regards to the tax payment. We are going to vote on that tonight, right? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, ordinance is third and final reading, final passes are none. Moving on to introduction of ordinance, it's Clerk Golick.
Item A, ordinance fifteen dash fifteen, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance to establish rules and regulations for the discharge of wastewater into the wastewater treatment systems of the Sanitary District of Hammond.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move that fifteen dash fifteen pass through first and second reading, and we refer to council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item B, ordinance fifteen dash sixteen, sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and the petitioners are the Hammond Housing Authority. And ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-five fourteen, also known as Hammond Zoning Ordinance, and amending ordinance number ninety-one eighty-eight, for purposes of amending the Plan Unit Development District ordinance for the Columbia Center Plant Unit Development.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinance fifteen dash sixteen, be moved to first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Kalwinski. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item C, ordinance fifteen dash seventeen, sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and ordinance to establish the seventy-three, seventy-four hundred block of Flagstone Drive between one hundred and seventy-fourth Place and Wilson Place, a one-way street going north, and repealing any ordinances in conflict there, too.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinance fifteen dash seventeen, be moved to first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item D, ordinance fifteen dash eighteen, sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and ordinance to permit angle parking at location east side of the seventy-three, four hundred block of Flagstone Drive between one hundred and seventy-fourth Place and Wilson Place.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that ordinance fifteen dash eighteen, be referred to first and second reading, and then refer to council as a whole. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of introduction of ordinance.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution fifteen R-oh-eight, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Hammond City Council granting FJ billing of Indiana LLC, DBA, American Stair Corporation, and assessed valuation deduction, or tax abatement, for qualified tangible personal property pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for adoption of fifteen R dash oh-eight.
Second.
It's a motion for adoption by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
This resolution and the next two are part of the process of moving along on the tax abatement process. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to clarify, fifteen oh-five technically has to be approved before fifteen oh-eight, nine, and ten, so I would just ask the council, you did do a public hearing on fifteen oh-five, but neglected to actually confirm it, and then once you confirm it, you can do eight, nine, and ten.
Okay, well, let's go back to fifteen R-oh-five.
Resolution number fifteen R dash oh-five, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming Resolution number R-15, fourteen R dash fifteen, that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Motion to adopt fifteen R dash oh-five.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali for final adoption of fifteen R dash five. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote on fifteen R five.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Yulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Fifteen R dash five passes, nine-zero. Yes, oh-eight. I guess we've got to do the whole thing over again on fifteen R oh-eight.
Okay. Resolution fifteen R dash oh-eight, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Hammond City Council granting FJ billing of Indiana LLC, DBA, American Stair Corporation, and assessed valuation deduction, tax abatement, for qualified tangible personal property pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Move for passage of fifteen R dash oh-eight.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kalwinski, second by Councilman Spitali for final adoption Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of 15R-8. Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote on 15R-8.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, 15R-8 passes 9-0.
Item B, Resolution 15R-09, sponsored by Councilman Kowinski. A, excuse me, a resolution of the Hammond City Council granting FJ billing of Indiana, Indiana LLC, DBA, American Stair Corporation, and assessed valuation deduction, tax abatement, for qualified tangible real property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for passage of 15R-09.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 15R-9. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on 15R-9? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, 15R-9 passes 9-0.
Item C, Resolution 15R-10, sponsored by Councilman Kowinski. A resolution of the Hammond City Council granting FJ billing of Indiana LLC, DBA, American Stair Corporation, and assessed valuation deduction or a tax abatement for the occupation of an eligible vacant building pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Move for passage of 15R-10.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 15R-10. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Again, in summary, these four resolutions are part of the process for granting a tax abatement to American Stair Corporation, 30th and 31st Avenue.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call, vote on 15R-10.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Ulaki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, 15R-10 passes 9-0.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Cassville Little League announces its 62nd Annual Little League Parade, Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, at 9:00 A.M. Lineup is at 8:00 A.M. Parade route is Morton High School to 169th West to Kennedy Avenue, north to Archer Drive, east of Codwell Youth Sports Complex. Come join us and hold our biggest and best parade ever, over 30 floats, candy, bands, et cetera, dances. And that's on May 2nd, 2015.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement in regards to 5633 Calumon Avenue. There's a building that had to be cleaned up, and it needs to be boarded up, and we got some homeless people living there. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa to send a letter to code enforcement in regards to 5633 on the cleanup, 5633 Calumon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm requesting a letter goes to Economic Development in regards to the Kentucky Fried Building, Burger King, and Stardust Bowling Alley, the former Stardust Bowling Alley on Columbia Avenue. The structures have been vacant for a number of years, and I'd like to know the status or if the Economic Development Department is seeking some businesses to come in those vacant properties. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa to send a letter to Economic Development in regards to the Kentucky Fried Chicken, and also the old Stardust, in regards to the possibilities of what's going on as far as new business in that area. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement in regards to 6342 Euclid where a house is vacant, and it's very in deplorable condition, it needs to be boarded up. Also, 840 Becker and 838 Carroll have been on the demo list, and I know we got the hardest hit fund, I'd like to know the status of those properties and when they're going to be demoed. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa to send a letter to code enforcement in regards to 6342 Euclid, as far as the situation of that house, and also 840 Becker and 838 as far as the demos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement and the street department in terms of addressing the alley between 1100 Block of Morrison Highland. There's a number of bags and debris in the alley that hasn't been picked up in two weeks. I so move.
The motion by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to code enforcement, or street department, second by Councilman Henosa in regards to 1100 Morrison, and what else was that, was the other one?
Between 1100 Block of Morrison Highland.
Between Morrison Highland, 1100 Block, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
And Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement in regards to 842 Ang Street. The house has been vacant for 10 years. I've sent several letters, and I'd like to know the status of when that property's going to be demoed. It's directly across the street from Haven House. I so move.
A motion by Councilman Higgs, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Henosa to send code enforcement a letter in regards to 842 Angs. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Yeah, I'd like a letter sent to the school city of Hammond and the Hammond Police Department on the traffic, on the two exits, entrances to Hess School on Orchard Drive, due to a lot of traffic and disobeying crossing guards. I so move.
Right.
The motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Higgs, to have a letter sent to the school city of Hammond, also police department in regards to the crossing, crossing guards, or the two sections of crossing over Hess School, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received a phone call from Scott Newman at 1008 Drucker Street. He hasn't received his garbage can, and I'm, so I'm requesting a letter be sent to the sanitation department in regards to finding out what's the need for him to, what's needed for him to get a garbage can. I so move.
Second.
The motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa, send a letter as far as 1008 Drucker in regards to the garbage can. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new unfinished business? New unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. First speaker of the night will be Mr. Michael Swiger. You have three minutes to speak, state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Mike Swiger. I live at 6730 Huron Avenue, here in Hammond. Good evening, council members and residents of Hammond. The time has come again to nominate the future leaders of the city of Hammond. Many people take this four-year tradition for granted, and some even choose not to participate. The ability to choose our leaders through the consensus of the people is one of the hallmarks of our democracy. To the many people who choose not to participate in this election, I ask you to take a moment and reflect on the last 14 and a half years of war. Young men and women have been serving overseas for the last decade plus because they believe so strongly in the right to be able to choose our leaders with votes rather than bullets and bombs, that they are willing to pay the ultimate price to ensure that our way of life does not perish to terror. To those who believe that their vote doesn't matter, I say to you that your vote mattered to someone so much that they were willing to die so that you could keep it. I am not here tonight to promote any particular elected official or candidate. Rather, I'm here to humbly ask that everyone who is eligible come out and vote on May 5th and be a participant in the democracy that has been fought so hard to keep. Thank you. Good night.
Next speaker of the evening will, will be Carlotta Blake King.
Good evening, I too echo the sentiment of Mr. Swiger's comments regarding this upcoming election. Certainly, we know of the many folks that have literally died for the right to vote. And I would challenge and encourage everyone under the sound of my voice, whatever problem you have with not voting, let it go this particular election season. We would like to see everyone out there voting because, again, too many people have literally died for folks to vote, vote, vote. Thank you very much.
Next speaker will be Mr. George Stoya. Final speaker of the evening will be Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, 832 Merrill Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the person who donated the money from the True Potato Pies for cancer and dementia. We sought out to raise money to help cancer and dementia, so it was a great success. Secondly, I have neckties and belts for any of the young men that would like a belt or a necktie, compliments of Desmond Hamilton, my nephew, and Smith Barney, accounting firm out of California. They donated the belts, and they're Calvin Klein belts and Calvin Klein ties. So, have that for you, young guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeks. That ends our public expression. Oh, we have one more.
Mr. President, I apologize that I didn't sign in. May I ask you? My name is Michelle Raisin, I'm the vice president and associate manager for Northlake Pop Warner. I forwarded several letters to the councilmen and politicians in the area. I just wanted to take this opportunity and tell you about some wonderful things that have happened in our community. We have seven young men in fifth and sixth grade that are being academically achieved at the national level. What that means is basically they had to have a 96% or higher grade point average, and it also means that they are actively involved in community activities, organizations, and whatnot. We're very proud of these young men. We are, right now, trying to provide them the opportunity to travel to San Diego, to be able to participate in this national banquet. So, I would hope that, I'd like to thank you in advance for your consideration in reading my letter and responding. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Yeah, a motion to open new and unfinished business.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Higgs, to open up new and unfinished business, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Certainly, I want to echo the sentiments of Ms. King as well as Mr. Swiger. But even in the election process, there have been some things that really have been disturbing as it relates to this upcoming election. All the pettiness, the back body and the backstabbing was totally unnecessary, the stalking. It's not necessary. The people will make a decision on Tuesday. And hopefully, the decision will be to serve this great city. And I'm hoping those that are elected in the future take the responsibility to do what's necessary to move this city forward. It's really been really, a really nasty, nasty election. And all the things that have went on in this process, all I can say is, if it hadn't have been for the Lord, oh my God, where would I be?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Motion to go back to regular order of business?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Henosa, go back to regular order of business, second by Councilman Markovich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting to adjourn.
Mr. President, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Henosa, second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.